Ulster County Planning Board Meeting to Order.
Thanks, Jer. I'll do roll call.
Roll, good.
Thank you. Sopas Roxanne Pacora. Hurley Lisa Nance.
Here.
Don Conyer.
Here.
Scott McCarthy Lloyd.
He had to beg out. He had to go out of town.
Okay, is excused.
Yeah.
Dan Proctor. Marble Town.
He's excused too.
Cindy Lanzetta Marlborough.
Here.
Thank you Cindy. Michael Calamano or Amanda Gatto from New Paltz. Yeah, sorry guys. Thomas Wilkin from um. I'm sorry, Mr. Drew Bages from Olive.
I'm here.
Hi Drew.
Hey.
Plattekill Tom Wilkin.
Here.
Michael Bowden from Rochester.
Here.
Thank you. Jared Brown.
Here.
Sargerties Robert Herbauti. Nice to have Robert.
Here.
Vivian Welton from Shandaken.
Here.
Mark Watkins. Shangum. Frank Anquist Ulster.
Yep, here.
Victor Markowitz. For Worsing. Matt Rudicoff Woodstock. Joanna Weiner at Ellenville.
Here.
Bill Murray is excused. Vince McLaughlin from the town of Sargerties Village.
Village.
Sorry, I said village. I got it in there. John Bonavita Goldman from Kingston. Gio from the city of Kingston.
I'm here.
Three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10.
10.
11, 12, 13. We have 14. We have a quorum.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, do I hear a motion for the approval of last month's meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second John.
Okay, hold on guys. You're gonna need you to identify yourself when you make the motions, please.
Vince McLaughlin made it.
Thanks Vince. Second was?
John.
Thank you, Mr. Conyer.
Who else?
Actually, I have 15 by the way, because Mr. Markowitz is here.
Okay. So I have a motion and a second, Chair.
Okay. All those in favor? Uh, excuse me. Those opposed? Probably be easier, do you need or?
Yeah, opposed is easier, please.
Do you need to roll?
No, just if anybody's opposed, they can identify themselves.
Okay. Is anybody opposed to the approval? Hearing none, they're passed.
Thanks, Chair.
Okay, any education and training opportunities? Beyond what's been sent out?
Nothing from me.
Alright.
Yeah, um Dennis and Jerry, it's Mike Baden. The Planning Federation sent out an email. Uh, earlier this week and I unfortunately forgot to look at the date, but sometime in the next two weeks. It's a training session. It's free for any members who are uh, any towns or any people who are members of Planning Federation, so. Dennis said the county planning board is a part of that. It's about uh. How planning boards and elected officials can uh, should work together. Um, might be actually a good training session.
Yeah, that could be interesting.
It's on January 19th and it's from 12 to 1.
Perfect.
Who's put that on, Mike?
It's the New York Planning Federation.
Anybody.
Yep, and it's, it's, it's free to a- any, any members of the Planning Federation.
Which is all of us.
Yep.
Okay. Could somebody send a link for the uh, training, if anybody has it?
I can try to do it tomorrow, but I mean.
I can, I can try to find it and put it up in the, in the chat.
Thank you, Mike.
Great.
Any other training mark, or opportunities?
There was another one on waterfront. But uh. Probably just the Hudson River com- towns really are, would be concerned with it.
You know who gave that Frank?
On, on the uh waterfront. Uh, management. Cynick Hudson's involved in two or three others. I saw it just the other day. I can find it and uh, send it on to the secretary and have her bump it out to everyone.
Appreciate that Frank.
Was that just on the Hudson though?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, I believe so. Thank you.
Lisa, the Department of Estates has their ongoing winter series. They just had one last night and they have one next Tuesday at 5 o'clock.
Okay. Anything else?
Alright, community reports.
Yeah, I guess I have one. Uh. I've been given my freedom as of this afternoon, so I feel like a thousand pounds have been lifted off me. I won't have to recuse myself anymore when Plattekill's. Referrals get sent up since they just, town board decide they need to go a different way and not reappoint me on the planning board anymore. So. That's not, that's okay. It feels like a huge weight was lifted off my shoulders, so.
Are you still gonna represent him for the Transportation Council, Tom?
No, I told him since I'm not on the planning board, I shouldn't be doing that.
Good for you.
Thomas, um, we would ask you, I mean, you have a proxy signed.
I did, I did email one into the Ulster County Transportation Council saying I would not be at the meetings from now on. This afternoon, I'd emailed that up to.
Brian?
I suppose, yeah, just to the regular email account, not to anyone in particular.
Um. Have they restricted your, well, let's talk about this offline. It's the Transportation Council. We'll talk about it offline.
Yeah, okay.
Well, Tom, thank you for your service.
I'm still here. You're gonna stuck with.
For your town, because I know that meant a lot.
You guys are gonna be stuck with me for another two years and then I'll be. So I feel sorry for you guys.
It gives you more time to serve on committees, Tom.
But this is what happens when you're a bad boy, so.
You, bad boy, you.
Yes, I am.
Well, the, Deving always needs a representative, Tom, so.
Yeah.
Any other community reports?
Um, I've got a couple from um, from Olive. You wanna go first, Mike?
No, you go ahead.
Okay, so Dennis, I, I'm sure you're aware of this, but there. The, the, the multi-hollow bridge that's on um, Watson Hollow Road is being replaced by the county. That work should have started in December. As far as I know, the contract was probably cut loose by then. The only thing that was gonna happen. Before winter hit was the tree worked and then they'd probably start back up in April. Um, to actually do the work. I guess the good news is there will be an onsite. Um, bypass road, one lane. And the reason I bring it up to, to, to the county planning board is that's the road to Peekamoose. Uh, hiking trails and to the Blue Hole. So that could be an interesting summer next year with the traffic. Uh, the other thing is, I've mentioned many times, the flood buyout in Boysville, and I did get an update at the end of December. As far as the contracts to take down the structures on four properties. Those contracts were lit out and there's, that work is supposed to be complete by the end of this month. And whether that actually happens or not is another matter, but that's what's supposed to happen. And in light of that, Jim Zafranko um, was made aware, our supervisor was made aware of a um. A potential grant from uh, the Nature Conservancy to deal with things like Boysville and what do you do with vacant land? So he's got a little commission of three people, I think, that are experiencing this, writing grants. We got through the first phase of it. Uh, they were down to five people and so they're gonna award a hundred thousand dollars to two or more. Communities for uh, planning what you do with the vacant land and the flood ballot situation. So I think that's all I got.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Drew, appreciate it. Mike?
Yeah, um, I just, I just put a link in, in the chat. Um. I serve on the Ulster County Trails Advisory Committee and. Uh, Dennis, you may have already seen a copy of this, but the uh.
Oh, yeah.
Committee has put together a 2020 State of the Trails Report. We. Similar to what the county planning board does, we do an annual report to the legislature. Um, and Kevin Smith and uh, and uh. Who's the new chair of that and uh, I'm drawing a blank on the gentleman's name who used to be with the National Park Service. He's now retired, but he has stayed on with us kind of in, in, in an unofficial role. Anyway, they put together a, a pretty amazing pamphlet. Um, I just shared the link to it. Um, if your, if your towns have trails in, in, that are part of the county trail system. Definitely take a look at it. There's a lot of great photographs of people utilizing the trails and uh. Just wanted to bring it to people's attention and we're trying to share it and get it, get the information out there. We don't have the funds to. To make a lot of printed copies. We are gonna make a, a, a small amount of printed copies of it, but uh. Um, I did check with him today and he said, feel free to share it, so.
Hey, Mike, let me know how many they want. Depending upon what they are, I'll make the copies for you.
Okay. Okay, yeah, uh, they were working on some funding from the National Park Service for a minimal number of copies, so.
Let me know.
Okay.
Thank you, Dennis.
Planning Board Reports.
Any other community reports, Chair, you think? What do you think? We're done?
I think we're done on those.
Okay. I don't know if there's, you, as Chair, do you have any, anything to report, Chair?
I just wanna say thank you.
That's a short report.
Be nice. Be kind.
Like to, I would really like to say good luck, Chair, and um, I wanna thank, I wanna, I wanna thank Mike for all his time that he put in and, and all the work that he did too. So thank you, Mike.
I guess I'll second that. How's that?
Good job.
Any um, committee reports? I don't think there are any. Okay. Dennis, you're up.
Thanks, Chair.
Words. Thank you.
So um, we just started the new year off, so finances are great. Um. But um, so I really have nothing to report in the financial section. We finished out um. The year with not a lot of funding left over in our professional services account. I think we're down to something like forty some thousand in terms of where we were relative to committed contracts. And the current budget is, is uh, is bare bones. For 2021. Um, so um, we'll watch our, you know, we'll, we, we did reduce the mileage. Um, and the conference fees, um, in some anticipation that we may be into this COVID lockdown, at least until summer. Um, in terms of travel and uh, and in-person meetings. So that's a, just be aware of that, but other than that, we're in good shape. Um, environmental notice boltens, I really have nothing to add to that environmental notice boltens. If anybody has anything. That they wanna talk about from the environmental, suppose to let me know. Okay. Bring it on, I'll move on. Communications, have a whole slew of communications. They're basically related to Seeker. Um, County of Olive Town Board Lead Agency Request for Salar Mill Farms. That's a 14 lot subdivision. Uh, we, we handled a call, Drew, you should be aware of this. We handled a call from the consultants for that. Um, reached out to us and just asked if we had any comments. So we gave them some unofficial, staff gave them some unofficial comments with respect to that, that subdivision. Uh, County of Gardner Lead Agency Designation, that's a solar facility. County of Ulster, that's an 8,000 square foot warehouse. That's on our agenda tonight, right, Rob? That warehouse in Ulster?
Yeah. Correct.
Yeah, and Woodstock has virtual public hearings and Rochester Planning Board Public Hearings and the Town of Shandaken Public Hearings. Um, but other than that, that's all the communications we have. So Director Staff Reports, I, I, I do wanna announce that um, we've had a um. A resignation from staff. Uh, Chris White, who was Deputy Director in Charge of Special Projects, has resigned. His resignation is effective, I believe, that 18th or 19th of February. Uh, uh, you know, of January, he has been awarded and will be taking the job as the City Manager for the City of Beacon. Uh, Chris has long, the City of Kingston, he actually was an elected councilman in the city, still over, one of the youngest elected councilmen's in the city about 25 years ago. Um, I think he was 22 or 23 at the time. He's also worked for a few businesses in the city as well. Uh, and Chris um, really wanted to leave because um, he was mad at me. No, he really wanted to leave because. Um, it really is, it really is right up his alley. His, his master's degree was in public administration. Uh, and given that and the deep roots in the city of Beacon, he really was thought that this was an excellent opportunity. So we've been working through, for a number of weeks now, we've been working through, and he was, he wasn't confirmed until last Monday, into this Monday. So he wasn't confirmed by the council, so we didn't know whether he was gonna get the job or not. Um. And so um, we've been working through a number of exit memos and, and things like that that we need to do in order to, in order to um. Make sure that there's a smooth transition when he leaves the department and Chris has graciously extended an offer that if there's any questions that we have. Uh, that he, he'd be more than willing to help us answer them and help us move through it. So we're gonna miss him. He's been a great addition to the office for the, the time he's been here on a number of different projects. And you, what you don't see behind the scene is what Chris adds to the office in terms of, in terms of his expertise across a number of state and federal programs. As well as Chris has got a bit of steel in his spine, so um, he won't be bullied. Uh, and that is, that has really helped us in a lot of the dealings that we've had with landowners and others. Um, in terms of moving a lot of these projects forward. It's been a, it's been a really great time and we're gonna miss him all. We're gonna miss him, even though I know he didn't, didn't appear much in front of this board. He was, he was a huge presence in the office.
Agreed. Wow.
He was very helpful to us in Shandaken also.
Yeah, yeah, he's, he's just that kinda guy. If he can help, he will and, and, and he digs into things and keeps going.
Same, same with Olive, with the Ashokan Rail Trail.
Yeah, that's, I mean, it was one of the largest capital projects that the county has ever undertaken. We came in under budget, on time. Um, and it's won uh, national awards for the engineering firm, uh, and certainly national recognition with respect to uh. Uh, its design and its implementation, so. And its use as well. It's been one, it was a USA Today. Um, nominated for one of the top destinations in the US.
Woo.
I don't know if that's a good thing.
Yeah, I don't know either, but. But it is. Um, and I was saying before the, before the meeting that uh, we, we were well over 220,000, 230,000 visitors. Uh, with thousands on certain, on specific days uh, being, being uh, being there. And, and there's a constant maintenance issue we're gonna have with the trail and we're aware of that. And so um, Chris has been sort of working with DPW about those maintenance issues that we have and ongoing maintenance issues on the trail. Um, and some of the uh, the other things that we need to keep an eye on with respect to the trail. And then. The next question that we have to ask ourselves, and we're starting to ask, and I hope the Trails Committee can participate in this, Mike. Um, is we have to ask ourselves is what next? Um, the County Planning Department, if I may. County Planning Department is involved in two additional trail constructions. Uh, the Midtown Linear Park is about point eight miles. The trail. Runs from Cornell Street to the Kingston Plaza in the city of Kingston. Uh, that. Um, that project is literally uh, working right away, has been completed. We're literally working on bid documents. And hopefully by the end of, by the end of next week or certainly the week after, certainly by the last week in January, the first week in February, we'll be able to go to bid on that project. For construction to start sometime in, in late spring or early summer. Um, so that's a, that's a great project and Chris has brought it this far along. Uh, there's been a lot of back and forth with respect to that and that's ready to go. It's about a. About a two, 1.8 million dollar project. Um, and it includes a paved trail that's 12 foot wide. Um, and lighting and, and other amenities associated with it. The other trails project that we, that we have ongoing in the office. Uh, is, is the Kingston Lin, is the Kingston Rail Trail and that runs from Washington Avenue out to Route 209 uh, in the town of Hurley. Uh, that project is in right-of-way acquisition. Uh, we've had a single landowner that is, has refused to essentially work with us in terms of. Uh, allowing us to use the property to cross the trail. Uh, majority of that trail is owned by Central Hudson and they donated the easement. Uh, to us, uh, but the one landowner that is causing problems. Uh, wanted us to essentially do something off the trail in order for them to give us the land and we were unable to do that. Under the federal rules and also the fact that we weren't sure that the legislature would actually move to approve what they were asking. And required legislative action. Uh, so we're in imminent domain proceedings. Um, and we should have an answer to that, I would say, and it's. Certainly in the next a couple of months, depending upon the court situation. Um, and then that would anticipate that we would go to construction, uh, go to bid sometime in the late fall. Uh, or perhaps, um, or perhaps sooner, but I, I think late fall uh, with construction to start at that particular point in time.
Dennis, Dennis, do you know if they uh, finally straightened out the issue on that trail with uh, the Ulster Savings Bank and the?
That's the, that's the parcel. That's the parcel that we're working on right now. That's the, that's the parcel we're working on. Um, yeah, it wasn't a deed issue, it was more of a um, an issue that they didn't want us to have the property unless we gave them something else and we couldn't do that. Um, and we're also working on what they call a use and occupancy permit to get under the throughway. Uh, because the throughway actually owns the land under the bridge that the trail goes through. But those are two trail projects that are out there. Uh, that we're gonna be working on and, and we're currently involved, the Transportation Council is currently involved in a. Um, study on the UND corridor up in Shandaken. Uh, it's up from, basically runs from Pine Hill to Big Indian. Uh, that study is sponsored through kickoff meetings. There's been an existing conditions report prepared. Chris was the head of that study. That study is gonna be transferred over and have some responsibility. Um, for myself and for uh, Brian Slack from the Transportation Council. Uh, the Midtown Linear Park and the Kingston Rail Trail, we're gonna share that responsibility with the uh. With the Public Works Department. They're gonna step in on some of the construction management stuff and we're gonna handle the paperwork on our side. Uh, since um, all the resolutions and all of the sign permits are on our side of the, our side of the shop right now. So that's, that's where we are on those trails. I would ask um. One of the questions that I, we, I think we need to start to ask ourselves is, is where else should we be thinking that the county can play a role in, in trail construction? I hope that the Trails Committee would start to ask those questions. Where, where's the next priority of gaps that we should close or new trails that we should build?
Shangum.
Yeah.
Yeah, well. I'll give you the same answer that I've been giving Chris for the last two years down in Rochester, closing up the gap on the O and W.
Okay, alright.
He, he, his answer would always be that I'd be the last mile, so.
I told you he had a spine of steel.
Oh, yeah. You know, but I was gonna, gonna have to work to change his mind, so.
Well, he said that about Shangum too, going by the prison. That's the last one we're gonna tackle.
Yep.
Well, we, we wanna get, well, I, that's a, that's something I think. Just be aware of the fact that one of the ways that you can start that process, process is to have us do a, like what we did, I mean, my sense is, is what we did in, in Woodstock, in, in, excuse me, in New Paltz with the. Walk Hill Valley Rail Trail Opportunity Study is something that we should be thinking about and doing relative to. Those gaps that the Trails Committee or someone else tells us that we should think about closing is to do those feasibility work. So that we line ourselves up for the grants, the grants, the grants coming in the future. Just, just back your mind.
The Trails Committee meets on the 25th, so I'll bring uh, I'll bring all that information back to them.
Yeah, I mean, we, we would hope that we would be able to uh, move some of the projects forward, particularly the Walk Hill Valley uh, Rail Trail Opportunity Study. Uh, to move that project forward when the, when the uh. Uh, the, the grant, the grant announcement for what they call the Transportation Alternatives Grant Announcement comes out, comes out.
Dennis, this is Drew. I had a quick question concerning Chris. So rightly or wrongly, I've used Chris as a point man for any issues that were on the Ashokan Rail Trail. Um, so at some point when you've got it figured out, I'd like to know who that would be, if there's any issues that need to be addressed.
We think we're gonna use, you think we're gonna use DPW to address, to address issues with respect to maintenance of the trail?
Okay.
Um, and that conversation then will spill over to what happens with respect to operational issues on the trail, particularly violations and stuff like that. Um, Chris, Chris and I are having that conversation right now. We had the conversation with DPW. They're aware of the fact that they have responsibilities for maintenance issues on the trail, but. I mean, the, my sense of this is that we have trail stewards up there. Um, and those trail stewards are probably better at first point of contact or they're, they get paid to do this work. So they're probably better first point of contract and then back to us, uh, because the day-to-day attention here is gonna suffer. There's no doubt about that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Dennis.
So.
The, the count of people, the 220,000.
Yeah.
It's the time period.
Uh, basically from when we opened in October to where we are now, so it's just about a year. Over, just over a year.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and I think we, I think they have counts for this year alone. I don't remember what they are.
Wow.
Uh, I would wanna say that we're, we're, for, for, for right now, we're waiting on, I have a request to fill for the position. Um, so when I find out from that request to fill and, and where we are, we, we will start the process of filling that, filling that position. Um, and we're having discussions at the administration level about the skillsets that we'll need for that position. Versus where the, where are, where the current skillsets are versus what the duties of the department may change or alter. Uh, going forward. So we'll have to, I'll let you know when that happens. Uh, but that, those discussions are ongoing and I believe that we'll be allowed to fill that position.
Dennis.
Yes.
Question, uh, this is Vivian. Um, the UND Corridor from Pine Hill to Big Indian, did I hear you right?
That's correct.
Is that going to connect eventually with anything else?
Um, right now, the connection is Bel Air. Uh, and the train facility coming out of Delaware County. And at Big Indian, at the Big Indian side, it'd be the connection to the park area at Big Indian. There's a small local park. At Big Indian, and then along the trail, it connects to the Day, Day Use Center. Uh, and then from the Day Use Center, it would also connect to the lands that DDC bought from the Bel Air. Project, which is about 2,000 acres, which run up into trail systems that run up the mountain in that wild forest area.
Okay.
So it has connections along it. If you're asking me, can I get to finish it? The answer is no.
Now, uh, there was originally a railroad along there, um, but that hasn't been running?
The railroad, that, that section of trail by policy of the legislature or rail, by policy of the legislature is deemed for trail only.
Okay.
Dennis, uh, on, as far as uh, the deputy job, does that mean that you're going to look at the duties and possibly come back to the, it'll be more under the planning board?
No.
Department, or it will be still connected with the executives?
Well, it's always, I mean, under, look at it this way. We have a responsibility under the charter to support the planning board, but. What, what we're looking at now is, is my sense would be is, is that we may have different initiatives that are coming out of the executive's office or coming out of the legislature, which we need to staff, which is a different skillset than project management.
Okay.
Um, and I just, we just don't know yet. I mean, we're looking at three or four different alternatives in terms of skillsets. Um, that we can think that would work. Um, so we're waiting to see, I'm waiting to see what. Um, I'm waiting to have that conversation. First of all, first of all, I'm waiting to see whether they're gonna allow me to fill the position. That's the first thing. Um, and then the second piece of that is what skillsets are necessary. Okay, I'm done.
Now, I can't see if there's any public, but are there any public comments?
There will, should be. There are a number of people. So if you uh, want to have a public comment, now it's time to raise your hand. And I'll uh, un, I'll, I'll mute your mic.
There are five guests listed.
Yeah, I know. They have to actually raise their hand though.
Okay.
This is your only chance to speak, by the way, so you can't lose your chance if you wanna have public comment. Or if you want to, or if you're an applicant for a project too. Alright. Alright.
Hearing none, so. Alright.
Got one.
Oh, you got one? Alright, hang on. Alrighty. Alright, yes, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I was just unclear. Um, we're here because we have a business proposal in Shandaken. We're waiting to hear back for, I wasn't. Is this what we would have a public comment on or are you specifically speaking to the rail trail?
No.
This is for, uh, everything before the county planning board tonight.
Oh, okay, great. Um, well, we were hoping to hear back about our, uh, referral from the town of Shandaken about, uh, special use permit that we applied for.
But we haven't gone to referrals yet, so if you have any public comments about it, you want to share about the project, next chance.
Okay, no, sorry, I just was unclear.
Okay.
Jerry, you want to move on to zoning referrals?
Sure.
Yeah, so let's move on to zoning referrals. Thank you.
Should I take Shandaken first since we have members of the public here for it?
I would go ahead.
Alright, let me do that.
Robert, what number is that on our agenda?
That is number. It's two numbers.
Twenty one.
Number twenty one and twenty two.
Thank you.
Yep.
This is Vivian, I'm recused.
Thank you, Vivian.
Alrighty. So. This is, uh, Phoenisha, Shandaken. And here we have Main Street right along here.
Hey, Rob, is your mic, are you on a separate mic or something? Because you're, you're kind of, you're kind of rough.
Let me try something. Hang on a second. I'm going to change my, uh. How about now?
Better, not a lot, but better.
Now?
Yeah.
Yes, no?
That's better.
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, that's a lot better. No, I can't hear you at all.
Okay, how about now?
Good.
Good. Now, okay, I took off my headset. That was probably, it was probably making it a little unclear. Okay.
Okay.
So, the blue line is Main Street and Phoenisha. And we have a proposal for. A special permit. It's a restaurant use is how it's proceeding under the special permit. This is the address here. Let me, uh, draw a line here. So it's a conversion of a, uh, single family home to a coffee shop slash market. And it's up this driveway, so it does have a Main Street address, but it's set back. On the property. Pretty far and it's surrounded by one, two, this is all residential in here, but it is zoned where it could be a special permit. Site plan for that. So that's, uh, let me share my, uh, PowerPoint here. Alright. Alright, so here we are. So seventy nine Main Street. Like I said, this is, uh, given to us in pieces, so you have the, uh, parking is proposed, this is not. This is just a, basically a sketch on the survey of proposed parking locations. Thus far, for, so we have parking, this is the, uh. Let me annotate again, this is the house that's being converted. So. Issues with respect to it. Okay, uh, let me just go through my list here. One second. Okay, clear.
Rob, you know how worried that driveway is going in there?
Um, let's see. Oh, I can measure.
Well, how about, yeah, I was going to say how long too.
Let me, let's go back to the aerial real quick. I can do that right on screen for y'all. See, so. See. So it's roughly.
Not liking you here today, is it, Rob?
No. Huh, that's strange. May not like to. Doesn't want to do it. That's strange.
Alright, why don't you go on, Rob? I'll see if I can catch it on another computer here.
Right, yeah, I don't know why it's not giving, letting me, uh, just keep moving the map around. So a pretty long driveway, the width isn't. It isn't all that wide either, as you can see. Here's some pictures actually. From applicant and from, uh, actually Vivian shared some pictures she took. Of the proposal.
Alright, we're still looking at your, uh.
Oh.
Yeah. That's back, Rob.
Yeah, hang on, going back. So this is, this is that driveway. As you approach the house.
Oh, okay.
And that's the turnaround area. This is some more. Along the, so you can see that looks about ten feet wide tops to me. Not my head. Uh, that's it toward, uh, Main Street.
So two cars can't be on it at the same time.
Doesn't look like it. So I have a whole bunch of comments. One, this, we want a lot of additional information with respect to the parking. Should be actually laid out to fit to whatever the town standards for parking spaces is. ADA parking should be included. You may notice from this, you have only a porch up. There should be some ADA compliance getting into the, uh. Shop as well, so they have to look into that.
Nice looking house.
Yeah.
Um, access. We, as you saw from the turnaround, this is. For truck and turning movements may be adequate. You'll have to have some verification of truck turning movements onto the property for deliveries. For the site. Uh, lighting details I do not have, though I believe it is only going to be open till eight. At night. Let's see, where are my other required mods here? Uh, so emergency access lighting, you have a lot of residential properties. If it's going to go forward, they should have. Adequate screening and landscaping, whether it be fences and landscaping. To, uh. To give any associated uses, and it is a special permitted use, so. What the applicant should do and the town's plan board should do when they look at this application is say. Given that it's surrounded by residences, even though it's in the HR. Zone, it should go through those standards that are found in the conformance, the, uh. Special permit standards and make sure it conforms to those. As it goes forward. And the last thing is the, um, septic was upgraded a little while back, but I don't know that it has. For food service halls, whereas a grease trap or things of that nature, so they should. And also, they do have municipal water at this location, but not sewer. So they will be a public water supply, so they may have additional permits to obtain from the health department.
Hey, Rob, uh, I, I'm not sure, I'm a little confused, but exactly what are they proposing here? Because it, it, it was kind of vague.
Okay, so it's basically a coffee shop market. Um, what I've been told is they're going to be bringing everything on, that they're not actually prepping food on the site, though they do have a new kitchen. They are going to basic, they can warm things up. And they'll have a coffee on site, but I don't believe they're actually intend to cook anything on site.
Rob, I, I can speak from, uh, a Rochester application of. With the public water supply and the distance from all those surrounding residential, um. Septic systems, it, it may not be an issue with septic on their property. But depending on the location of the water supply and the distance from septic on adjoining properties. Really needs to be looked at, so.
Mike, it, it, let's, let, let, let's clear that up. They're, they have community water.
No, I said, I said they had municipal water earlier.
Okay. Municipal water, it would be a public water supply use. So they have certain things they have to, they have to deal with there, but they have municipal water.
Okay, okay, my, my misunderstanding.
Okay, sorry. Any other comments?
So the question Mark asked, I have an answer for relative to the length of the driveway. It's about three hundred and fifty feet from the Main Street.
Okay, thank you.
Are you, are you?
And Rob, what exactly on the required modification? I'm sorry, what is it? What do you mean by re-refer and site plan?
Um, just, uh, based on the, the level of detail that I have, I was just often, since we don't issue incompletes. When we ask for a substantial amount of information and it's. Still hasn't arrived, we ask for a re-refer. That's up to.
Yeah, I got you.
If you want to, if you want to see it again or not.
And we, we can't force a board to re- re- refer. We could just say that. If, if there's, if all these questions remain and the, and the local planning board is still gathering information. They run the risk of essentially not having a full statement in front of the county planning board. Should the, the decision at the local level be challenged? That's what it means, Chair.
Yeah, I got you. Thanks.
And, and Rob, you're asking for, uh. For a, 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 a full site plan as opposed to just a, a sketch plan on the survey?
Right, and I mean, they should look at driveway width as possible and they should. Look for, I mean, is it upgraded to a commercial driveway now, so they should consult with the local, uh. So. Shandaken local department as well.
Well, do they have the land? Do they have the land for the width of the driveway for two cars to pass?
You know, the, the, I mean, they can get a variance from some of these things, Mark. Um, so the, the thing I would think would be most appropriate would be to have in, in, from an. Both, both an advice to the applicant and advice to the local planning board would be. You know, to have the site plan sort of reiterate what the zoning requirements are and how they meet them or how they don't meet them.
I just think it's a safety issue.
I don't disagree with you, Mark. I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just saying, what we're asking for is literally a. A site plan that has all of those things that you normally take, that you normally see in a site plan, which is. Here's what we propose. Here the, here are the requirements in the zoning statute. Here's how the proposal meets those requirements and where there's not. Here's where we're going to need variances or, or relief. They may not need a variance. They may just need a waiver. The local planning board may be able to waive it. We just don't know. And so we lay out the things that we think are the most concerned, which are parking, access, uh, lighting, um, ADA compliance, et cetera.
And landscaping and landscaping too.
Yeah, I'm sorry, landscaping. Thanks, Chair.
Yeah, but we're still asking for a re-referral though.
That's true. Yeah, once those details are there, it would be appropriate for us to see it again.
Okay.
Dennis, could we also add signage? Because if it's that far off the road.
Your wayfinding? Sure, Mike, I get it.
There's got to be some sort of signage by the road.
Yep. But it's still, it would still be on premise.
Correct.
Yeah.
But we still would want to see that signage of location and.
Yeah. I got you.
Okay, Watkins.
Are you fine?
And, and, uh, we find out, is that kind of salmon colored pinkish house? Is that on the property as well?
Salmon colored.
No. No.
Which one?
One. How is it that?
That, that's part of it, yeah, like a shed.
Uh, is it a shed? I mean, it isn't something habitable, is it?
I don't have any details on it. It has, let's see, what does it say? It says workshop on the plan.
Okay, because if you're going to have parking for that as well and people coming and going from that, then you get two uses.
Actually, wait, I was, I was a different portion. It, it just says shed on the plan, excuse me.
And so they're not utilizing it for anything?
No, the, uh, activity is taking place inside the, uh, house.
Yeah, I, I still want a note on that shed saying that it could, you know, I mean. If it became a guitar store or something like that, then you, you've got two uses on the property.
Mm-hmm.
It appeared as though there was a house almost on the property line.
It is.
Uh, shed.
It is, you're right.
And it's not on the map.
Let me go back to the photos and stop me when you, uh.
It was the one we just looked at.
This one?
That one.
Yeah, that's on another property.
Yeah.
What?
The one behind the shed is on another property.
Yeah, I mean, that's not even shown on the site plan and it's in pretty, pretty close.
Yeah, you can see it in the air photo, Chair.
Yeah. So. And I did see a sign, sign photo.
Right, that's right at the, uh. Right in front of the building. I don't know, that's not wayfinding signs.
That's correct. So they have something, but that would not be what you're looking for. Um. Okay. Mark, did you, uh?
Yes, I made the motion to support staff.
For which, for the re-referral?
Well, no, for the whole project.
Okay.
And Mike brought up the signs, which is, which is, uh, part of it and, um.
And also the additional landscaping.
Mm-hmm.
The, the, the whole list.
The whole list.
The whole list plus, plus signs.
Plus signs.
Gotcha.
I'll second that motion, Jerry. Mike Baden.
Okay. All those in.
Uh, you mentioned emergency access, what about turning a fire truck around back there?
That was part of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that is part of it. That's the safety part.
Right.
Okay. Any, um, any?
Additional comments?
Additional comments to make? Alright. Um, any, any, we got a recusal. Any, uh, objections? To the motion? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I just wanted to point out that, um, Matt Rudikoff and I had no objection, but I ha, I missed the, uh, attendance. But I did hear all the, uh, community reports and most importantly, heard Dennis's report, so.
Yeah, I got, I got you, Mike. Uh, Matt, I saw you join.
Yeah, we also got Amanda too on.
I saw Amanda too. I got, I got both here. I got both here in.
Thank you.
Hearing, hearing, no one objecting. Uh, the motion's passed.
Yeah. Back to the top. Alright.
Where are we now, Rob?
Uh, at the first one. Gardner, second, yep.
Any recusals?
Alright, County Gardener is proposing a six month moratorium on kennels. And it's both more time on processing and approving permits for kennels townwide, and that's for both. Commercial and private use. Uh, there's no provision, there's provision for hardship, there's no provision for any extensions beyond the six month period. Which staff approves of hardly thinking that. One should be able to develop a, uh. Law associated with kennels in the six month timeframe. So the only advise, required mod was that if they do subsequently request. An extension, that's a should provide a proof of progress.
Rob, we're going to add a, we're going to add a hardship provision as well?
No, they have, they have a hardship provision.
Oh, I, I thought you said there wasn't. I apologize.
Of course there, that there is.
Okay.
Uh, motion to approve, Mike Baden.
That, and Gio.
So Mike, Gio. Any pose?
The discussion, Chair.
Discussion. My only comment was there's a typo in the law.
Actually, I think I saw that one, yeah.
So, other than that, that was my comment. It was give instead of five. Talking about the amount of animals, so.
We got it. We'll, we'll, we'll mention it.
Okay. Alright, anything else? Okay, it's passed.
You know, you need, now you need to vote, Joe, Jer.
Oh, we did. No objections.
Okay.
Objections? Okay.
Alright. Guys, okay.
Sky solar, Chair?
Yes. Any recusals? Gardner again, so no.
Oh, okay, Sky Solar, it is a two megawatt solar facility. It's right on the town New Paltz. And Garner Boundary on Libertyville Road, so it's right across from the, uh, fairground. Uh, let me go to the, uh. Aerial for y'all. And. There it is. So it's, well, not right across, it's this property that I'm zooming in on right here. The access, of course, will be from Libertyville Road. The access, of course, will be from Libertyville Road, they'll need a DPW for approval to get access to the property. That'll be one, one required mod, they're aware of it, but we'll just make that a required mod. Uh, okay.
Rob, where is it in relation to the fairgrounds?
Fairgrounds, let me.
Those are the fairgrounds right there.
Got it.
I'm right on top of it.
No, it's on the other side of the road.
Right.
So it's on the other side and just, just to the south?
Yep. So the fairgrounds, so the fairgrounds are here. Fairgrounds are there.
Right.
Right, and a project is here.
What? Now, this is the fair, wait, hold on, this is the fairgrounds.
Fairgrounds extend both sides.
Okay, yes. That's the parking area.
Yeah, so then.
Okay, anyway. Okay, let me go back to the, uh, PowerPoint.
Tough night, guys, tough night.
All right, so one thing, I'll go, let me go advance through this, I got. Information, they have a wildlife management plan that's required in Gardner for solar facilities. As you see, there's some federal wetlands on site that they've delineated. And that they're putting posts. Into as part of it and their wildlife management report says this is not. A disturbance with respect.
So these areas here? Are wetlands?
Right, thank you.
Sorry, Rob, I'm, I'm trying, I'm trying to help you out, Rob.
That's, that's why I made you go. This is in color, you can, they, they, they show more here. Uh, with the connection to the, uh, like, is right in the road, right at the frontage. Comments on it, which affected our landscaping screening. From adjacencies, I mean, you have the, uh, county fair, but pretty level ground. Here, so it would be, might be highly visible from, uh, Libertyville. So they want, want to do that.
Can you go back to that for a moment?
Sure.
What are those, uh, baseball fields? Who uses those?
That's Field of Dreams.
Town of, the town of, uh, which, uh, town New Pulse uses those fields.
Okay.
So I, our comments on landscaping exten- extended the front of the property. So let me just see if I can do this again, Rob, I'm, I'm trying to. Trying to work this out in my head.
Yeah.
Yes, it extends in this area here, so the view up to the mountains, or you don't see the, the. You're gonna see this as it climbs the hill, but we want to try to see if we can get some landscaping in there. And then just basically make sure that this, that this gets protected as well.
Right.
Landscaping here, and those, that landscaping should not influence where you see, if you see the direction that their, uh. Their array is facing this way, that doesn't, won't influence their, uh, their ability to gather solar.
Is that, is that a house just off to the right in the corner there?
Isn't that the salt storage shed?
That's the salt storage shed, yeah.
Oh, okay, all right, no big deal.
And that has solar on it, by the way, you can see the solar panels on that.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Moving on.
Comments, Rob?
End them, so DPW for access. Need a final swipe, our usual comment about storm order monitoring during construction. Uh, also, construction procedures for the wetlands, and they should be monitored. And confirmation from the Army Corps of Year that, that does not create disturbance by. Putting them into the wetland. Uh, landscaping comment, as we mentioned, and if they haven't done it already, they should be notifying the town New Pulse, since it's around the town boundary.
And one of the reasons that we asked for the confirmation from ACOE, uh, Corps of Engineers is that. The other areas where the disturbing wet, wetlands, they cite, they cite the permit, the nationwide permit that allows them to do that. For the actual construction, actually getting in there and erecting the solar panels. They're not citing any, any nationwide permit that they're allowed to do that, so while the post may be okay. It's how you put the post in and how you put the solar panels on, which may create the disturbance. So we just want confirmation that they, that they're within the nationwide permit.
Rob or Dennis, should, should we clarify on the landscaping, cause I think this is a case where.
Yeah, we will.
Doesn't really satisfy the problem, I think it really should be a, a vegetative screening of some kind.
Yep, we will. We get it, Mike, particularly because of the, the view back to the, the mountains.
Correct.
Gotcha.
There was also a comment made by the, um, the engineer, I think it was. Uh, the Sterling review about the height of the fence from the ground. Not being adequate to allow, uh, smaller wildlife to go through.
Yeah, I think they're usually 12 inches, that's, that's the standard, I don't know what they proposed.
I think proposing slower than that.
Yeah, Garner has in its requirements wildlife fencing as part of it. Standard, so.
It does.
We can echo that comment, Chair, we can echo that comment.
Read through the review, and I think you're gonna see that they, that they saw that it was not meeting that one foot.
Okay.
Lower.
Okay.
Invited.
Vote, Chair?
Mike Baden, I'll make a motion to support staff comments.
Second, Conier.
Okay.
Discussion?
Any other discussion? Any objections?
Carrie.
Hearing none, it's Carrie. Onto Hartwood, Wildwood Farms. Any recusals?
All right. So this is back at the Hartwood project.
Both again, both at the same time?
Yeah.
Yeah, both at the same time. So proposed Hartwood project, if you all recall, near Tuttle Town Road. And that's the, uh, resort. This is when they were designing that, if you recall, they were doing a conservation easement. And it's already all in the Nag District parcel, so what they're doing is. Designing a facility that's within that conservation easement. So what they're doing is a vegetable farm, flower nursery, including barn, greenhouses, a farm stand, a structure for goat. On the property. There's no county impact on farm activity in the Nag District.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Watkins.
Who moved that?
Vince.
Thanks, Vince. Second was Watkins.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins.
Chair, any discussion? My only comment was that if it's on the same property with the other. A Hartwood project. Why wouldn't the road be kept the same way? As the existing project? The roadway going back into this is not going to. Be the same as the road throughout the rest of the project. According to what I read.
I think they're trying, probably trying to separate off that really intense use to Hartwood from. The road to this facility, I think. It's in two different locations, Chair. The Hartwood project is to the south of the site.
Yep.
And this project is to the north, or to the north, or north. The north of the site. Or let, let me put it a different way, that the, the. The, the Hartwood project's to the east of the site. And this project is to the north. West of that, of that project, so you, they can't, the, the road doesn't make sense to run through the existing road.
They're also trying to keep the people out of the easement.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Any other comments? Any objections?
Right.
It's passed.
Hold up.
Yep, next one's the Mitchum residence.
All right. Mitchum residence, so this is another, um. That we've been seeing a lot from this subdivision lately. Uh, single family home in the, uh. SP2 district, which requires a, a special permit in the site plan. Because of its location in the SP2 district. Only comment we have on it is you'll see that throughout the project, you have these exist, pre-existing. Stone walls, they'll be moving some of them to develop the project, what we'd ask them to do is advisory comment. Is to, uh, maintain the, uh, exa- existing wall that is not. Being removed as part of the project.
Wow.
Want me to say it again, preserve the remaining stone walls, please?
Thank you, that's, that's, that I got.
You're welcome, I was roundabout tonight.
Dave, motion to support staff comments?
I'll second it, Conier.
Hey.
I have a question, this is Vivian.
Thank you.
Is there a special, something special about that location where they have SP2 zoning?
It has to deal with, um, view sheds mostly, it's a visual protection.
Yeah. So is there, have you seen anything so far that's, it, it, it takes away from the view? Is it a large, not a large?
They have to do a whole analysis as part of it to make sure the compliance, they're not removing any. Trees of certain sizes and making sure they're not having visual impact as part of that, that's what their procedures include them having to do.
Uh-huh, what, what's our role in this then, since we don't see it?
See what?
I mean, we, we, are we seeing the, the plan, are we seeing the visuals, or are we supposed to?
They submitted them, right, Rob?
I didn't see any.
Cause we have a site plan, there weren't any visual analysis provided to us.
So if that is the criteria for getting the permit, um, how can we assess it?
I mean, I have their other work associated with this, typically, and, and let me back up. County Garner hasn't signed our exception agreement, usually we don't even review. Most single family homes for any impact.
We're also, Rob, if I can add, we're reviewing it from a, not from the local code standpoint, but from the impact in the county. So.
Yes.
Yeah, so we're not necessarily reviewing it for the same criteria that the count, that the local board is.
Rob, did they do a vis, did they say they did a visual impact assessment? Or don't you know?
I mean, then what they did was they looked at the building envelope, they looked at the trees and see what, showed what they'd moved. And they didn't have, they were able to avoid moving it, they had to change the site plan, I believe.
Can you go to, can, cause Vivian has a point, can you go to, can you go back to the, the air photo?
Sure. I never, I don't think I ever showed it, hang on a second.
Sorry, Rob.
All right, well, that's the site, so.
Can you, where, where is it in relationship to the mountain, that's what I want to know. Can you zoom out?
Yep, I can zoom out. So.
I got you, so it's not, it's in a sensitive area, but not that sensitive, I get it.
No.
All right.
We, we've reviewed about four or five of these. On this road right now.
So it, it, Mike, I mean, I hear what you're saying, Mike, but maybe what we should do is not only with respect to the preserve of the stone walls, but. Have an indication of where trees will be preserved as well. On the site, that would require additional permitting, if, you know, establish the building envelope and basically. Say additional permitting would be required if there's addition, additional trees are, are required to be cut, is that, does that help you, Mike and Vivian?
Yeah.
Well, I believe.
I don't, I don't see any giant trees on, on the, uh, the aerial.
The whole, it's all pretty forested up through there.
Yeah, uh-huh.
I mean, they have a limit to disturbance and a building envelope established on the site.
Oh, do they?
Yeah.
All right, then we're done, okay, that's, that's what I needed to hear, Rob, thank you.
Well, my, my concern that I saw was, uh. The, the only identified half an acre of disturbance. Now, did that include the driveway and the structures?
They would, yes, they would have to. They have to, Chair, they, they may have gotten it wrong, but, but the, the calculations would require them to include the driveway and the. And the, and the houses.
It seemed like a small amount with a large driveway like that. And, but. I agree with the, the comments.
So as long as there, as long as there, there, there's disturbed areas on this, I mean, a, uh. The area of the building envelope, right, Rob, you said was on the site?
Building envelope, and they have to provide, and they will be providing a final swipe.
Okay. So that, I think that addresses your comment, Vivian.
Okay.
Okay.
So we'll just do the advisory on the stone wall, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other comments? Okay. All those objecting? Hearing none? Okay, it's passed. Any other comments? Anyone from, object, any recusals on Tansillo?
And this is the, uh, next three, by the way, all three of them.
Yep. Okay.
Let me go back to the aerials for this one. I'm not there already. You all seen the aerial, right?
Yep.
Correct.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, so this is 500 feet from county road, you have an existing landscaping supply company. What they're doing is. This is already a part of that. Business, and what they're doing is part of the, uh. Lot line adjustment, which subdivision activity is just roping that into that. Landscape supply business. Um, there's no real, whoops, no real change to the, uh, site plan itself. As, uh, as proposed by that. This landscaping here, you can't see this from, you can't see this project from the road when it's fully. This, 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 pretty much completely obstructs the views of this property here. Let me go to the, uh. There we go. So that's, so you can see that they're adding. This portion of property onto the project. And that's like, that would be, uh, that's the aerial, every, all the, uh. Materials are in bins and organized, you can't see it from the road, you can see that tree lined on the roadway. There's no county impact on this.
Motion to support staff?
I'll second that, Gio.
Any discussion?
I would just say, I noticed that there was on area disturbance on, on the sheet, it had, uh. Few acre, or I forget the number, but nothing's being disturbed here, it is what it is. So I, I, I didn't know why that area disturbance was so high. Because, yeah, it's been disturbed, but it's not being really disturbed now, so.
Right.
That was the only.
Right, I have, uh, I have zero disturbed on these sheets, that's the actual.
Okay. Okay.
So that's a typo.
Hmm? Uh. Okay.
Any? Any obje- any objections? To the motion? Okay, no can, good. Move on to Hurley. Any, uh, recusals?
Uh, this is a proposal for a front yard variance for a sign location. Improve from NIS dot for it, I'll show you this property, so you have. This is where the sign was. Removing it over here, it's out of the, actually, they're moving it to here from there. So it's still out of the site triangle at that point. Uh, come on, now see. There we go. And that's the property, that's right near Vandale Road, between Vandale and Deanah Road on Route 28. No county impact on the sign.
I'll make a motion for that.
Second, Mike Baden.
Is it Conier or Baden?
Baden.
Okay.
You beat him.
Any discussion? Any objections to the motion? It's passed. Okay, Kingston City. Any recusals? They're doing good, but there's no recusals.
All right, City Kingston, so what we're seeing here is first of three proposed local laws. This one is on livestock, in the RRR zone of the city. They have a line on, for, requiring 200 feet from any street or property line for livestock, they're taking this. They're taking this literally, cutting, pacing it out of the zoning statute from the RRR uses and putting it in their chapter 151 animals of the City Kingston Code. No kind of impact on that.
So move, Mike Baden.
Second, Conier.
John woke up.
Any discussion?
I was woke up. I got stolen sometimes. I want to re-come. I just have a quick question. If anybody can explain the benefit of that in five, 10, 15 words or less, fine. If not, if it's if it's a tough dis, uh, description, then just let it go.
I, I was going to do the same thing, Gio, but there must be a reason that they want to do it.
Here, here's the benefit, right? It stops them from doing real things with the zoning statute, which they have to do, which they should be doing. Fair enough. Thank you.
Okay, any objections to this? All right. Number 12. Any recusals?
All right. Take, take that. City Kingston Formula Retail. So this, uh, statute does, this, uh, resolution does two things. One, it defines a formula retail store as a type of retail store or food sales establishment that is required to maintain standardized quotes, formula, array of services, merchandise, trademark logo, service, sign, decor, architecture, layout, uniform, or similar standardized feature. And then basically, this is for the C2 and C3 zones in the City Kingston, basically takes the approval process and gives it to the, uh, Historic Landmarks Preservation Commission in order to approve anything. So it doesn't say that it necessarily takes it away from the planning board, but it makes it an approval power in addition to that.
So they would have an approval power like they do in historic districts, but that's about it, right? And it's, and it's everywhere, Rob?
C2 and C3.
Yeah, I don't understand. Can, can you, can you tell us briefly where C2 and C, those two C zones?
Let me, uh, let me, uh, let me, uh, show us instead. Hang on. Let me, let me zoom out here. Let's go to City Kingston here. All right, hang on. Take off the aerial here. All right. So City Kingston. Get up some zoning. Come on. There we go. So C2 is your commercial district, stockade district area. And then the roadway.
Yeah, and it goes out Albany Avenue too, Rob. Goes out Albany Avenue.
Yeah, well, let's see. That's, there's RRR2 there. Oh, C, yeah, C3 over at, over by Stewart's.
Yeah. So it's basically the major roadways, gateways into the city, et cetera, et cetera. So in essence, it's giving the historical society a word in those areas on top of the, uh, stockade area. Yeah, but only for formula retail stores.
Right.
Well, yeah, yeah.
So we have a few comments on that. And actually, staff is actually recommending a disapprove on that because the city is currently in process of redoing their zoning statute. And this can be handled not by adding another layer of approval power, but by rather than doing, doing design guidelines by doing design standards for these areas. And that if design standards are held to a certain level, that the planning board should be able to keep projects within the scope of those design standards. Rather than add another layer delays times for people to do their project. Also thought is a little bit overreaching because there's no numerical threshold about formula. So you could have a local business where they might have uniforms and under subject to this law and they get an extra layer of business, not just McDonald's. It could be somebody with one, two, three restaurants, things like that.
So and it's, it's overreaching in one hand with respect to defining formula retail stores because they're, it's vague. I shouldn't say it's, it's overreaching. It's vague. Underreaching with respect to formula retail stores aren't the only problems with respect to what these, what these current, um, what the current design guidelines for, are for stores here in these areas.
Right. The city should be, the city should be focusing on what they, what kind of design they want for these areas, not just targeting specific uses. And if they have one specific design standard, then that's good enough for everybody.
Yeah, but so it wouldn't be overreaching. It would be, it would be, it would be vague, right?
Yeah. So we'll write vague for that and under, and underreaching with respect to the fact that it only deals with formula retail stores.
Correct. Motion to support staff. Watkins.
Gio, second. Excellent, excellent explanation.
I agree.
Any, uh, further discussion? So the motion is to disapprove.
Correct.
All those objecting? Hearing none. We disapprove this one.
The first.
First.
For the new year, by the way. I can't go wrong with that, right?
Right. Okay, let's go to number 13. Temporary use variance. Any recusal?
All right. City Kingston last law is temporary use variance. And basically what this does is if there's a federal, state or local state of emergency declared, it gives the EBA power to grant temporary use variances. And there's a timeframe component. They're granted for a year and it can be renewed for another year if the emergency remains in effect. They still require public hearing. They still require the applicant to basically show that they need to use variance, that they have a hardship and that they made reasonable efforts to use the pro, the other efforts to use the property for conforming reasons. We have another, another thought to this. And that thought is an advisory comment. And that they could rather than put it through the EBA and make it a use variance, which is a very burdensome process and hard to do, that they put it on the planning board side, do a temporary use permit. And so that'd be reviewed by the planning board. And then it wouldn't be a non-conforming use. It would be a, or a use variance, something that would get a use variance would be a temporary use that would be, that wouldn't require that high level of higher scrutiny would actually streamline the process for them during an emergency. There's also an issue with the timeframe. One year, continuing on for one year when if an emergency order has been lifted seems full lengthy. Maybe they should put a, uh, stay or a time period where they, maybe they get an extra month or two after the emergency has been lifted, that they have to finish up and clean up and put it back into conform and not let it just, if it was an emergency for a month and then it goes on for a year, that seems a little bit over.
And, and the other thing I think we should say with respect to this is, is that temporary usage permits under site plan review, the planning board would not require a public hearing.
Right. I think we should disapprove what was referred to us and offer this as an advisory comment as an alternative.
I'm okay with that.
Rather than just offering advisory comments because advisory comments, they could just take action. I think I, I, I feel like exactly what, what Rob said is a state of emergency to then give somebody a use for a year. A state of emergency could be a week. It could be a weekend. Um, you know, it, it seems a little, uh,
I, I think where they're headed this on, on some of these outdoor store, outdoor dining things.
Well, I know exactly where they're headed as, as, as a supervisor who has written 42 executive orders because I have to do it every five days for outdoor dining and I continue to do it every five days. And it's a bit tedious, but, uh, I'm worried that it could be abused the other way. And I think it's better to disapprove it and offer that as a, as a, as a way to do what they, they're trying to do.
We're good. We're good with that.
So I'll, I'll make that motion for disapproval.
I'll second that motion, Conier.
Please, it's Mike.
Excellent motion, Mike.
Any, uh, additional comments? Discussion? Rob, did they define, um, emergency? State of emergency?
It would be something that the, the mayor would have to declare a state of emergency. So it's, it's a declaration of a state of emergency by the chief elected official.
Yeah.
That's, that's covered under state law, Jerry.
Yeah, it is.
Right.
Make sure.
My original comments on that said, I had some concern at the local level and said, maybe at the local, they should really tighten it up and say what the emergency was for, but this is a better route to go.
Yep. Yep.
Okay, any objections? Okay, here's not a disapproval number two for the new year. Okay, next one's the town olive in Everton.
Drew, you going to recuse or not?
Nope, I don't need to on this one.
Okay.
Not on the planning board anymore.
Nope.
Nope.
All right, let's go to, let's do it on the fine bread alone here. There it is. So there's Brett alone. And proposing expansion and a complete renovation of the project.
So just show where they come in, Rob, off of 28, all right?
Sure.
No, the other way.
I went the other way. There you go. Over by the, uh, Boysville Inn over here.
So this is an old remnant of 28 that I think the town picks up this, Drew, right? It's jurisdiction of the town, right?
Uh, yes, as far as I know.
Yeah, yeah. So it's important to note that this is a, you know, this is sort of like a service road that services these businesses that the town takes. And then if you want to move down a little bit, Rob? And then just, just look at the mess that's in here now and wait till you see what they're going to do with it. It's pretty, it's pretty amazing.
Doing my thunder.
And, and by the way, in case anyone doesn't know, that service road used to have three entrances, one up, um, to the east, one to the west, and then, and the one that's still there several years back with the DOT's, uh, help, the two, too far in, so there's no, there's only one way into that now. And it's, it's a very wide curve cut.
So that was an existing condition. Now we have this.
Whoa.
Wow.
So we have channelized access off of that, uh, old Route 28. You see, this is.
People really like Brett.
Over here, you can see there are these gray over the parking spaces. That's because they're covered solar parking spaces. There's also electric vehicle charging stations. There'll be solar on the roof. They've defined the parking areas, added pedestrian connections. Uh, they've used, so it's very energy efficient. They're also into the low impact design for the, uh, stormwater on the property using bio retention, swales, rain gardens over the project. The access is better both from pedestrian and from a vehicular one. Uh, completely redesigning it too. Let's see.
They did a really neat thing on a, I'm, I'm sorry, Rob.
Where do you want to go?
Oh, zoom in on this area rate in the front where the, where the parking is along the road?
Oh, I can show you something else, I think. Let me, that's what it looks like now. But let me see if I got it. Eh, you can kind of see it from there. Okay, let me, I'll go back. Let me see if I can zoom in on this. There we go. There you go.
So they did a really nice thing in, in terms of they've, they've utilized this really underutilized road here. Right? It's not, it's actually not New York State 28. It's old Route 28. But what they've done is they created parallel parking along the road. So the P and a, and a set of steps up. So they got this really kind of neat place where you can just come in, turn around and parallel park adjacent to the road without going in and out of the parking lot. If you need to pick things up or something like that, it's kind of, it's kind of a really neat, neat use of this. And a sidewalk along the whole frontage. And they just got to, I think they just got to work out with the town about maintaining those spaces. I'm assuming the town will plow them, uh, and the sidewalk will be maintained by the, by the, by their owner. But really neat, really neat, uh, use of that, that underutilized right away.
I got to check, Dennis. I, I, I don't know who does plow that, but I'll find out.
Yeah.
Rob, the parking to the backside there, is that employee parking?
Correct.
That's, that's just, I mean, it's, this thing is like the textbook perfect site plan. It did everything right.
Staff is recommending approve on this, by the way.
Yeah, with, 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 with Biden, with Biden's comment, with Mike's comment, which is, is a textbook, textbook of, of site plan of the way things should be done. I, I, I think we should put that in there. If you don't mind, Mike.
I'll, I'll make it so there. So, but there's some advisories that they need to final split. Just clear up that on-street parking jurisdiction, uh, final signage. And I think Dennis had some comments about the, uh, who owned, actually, whose name was actually on the subdivision ownership, make it one, uh, owner was the issue. Was that it, Dennis?
Yeah, well, they've got, they've got two separate owners. The, the, the site act and plan now crosses into the adjoining lot, which they own, but it, one is in a corporate name, one is in a, one is in a, a personal name. And they need to make that right. They need to do something with respect to that.
Yeah, def, Dennis, they definitely need to fix that because we had, we had one in our town that was a subdivision, was two different, same group of people, but two different ownerships. And they didn't grant themselves a right of way over the front to the back. And then they sold the back property. And then the front property got sold and down the road and 20 years later, they realized they didn't have legal access.
Yeah, that's not good.
Nope.
Okay.
What's the access to the employee parking? I'm having trouble following.
Let me go back to the site plan. So we have a, um,
Right through here.
There's another road and then they go through the truck access for deliveries and.
Yeah, they go right through the truck ac, access.
Oh, okay. Is this like the first solar canopy parking lot we've seen?
No, we've got, we've got, I think there's one, I know there's one in Kingston that we saw, and I think there was one, one elsewhere. I can't remember where it was, but I know there's one in Kingston that we saw.
Doesn't the Rupco project have that?
Yeah, Rupco project. I thank you, Robert.
Yeah.
Great.
Motion to support staff.
I just.
Second, Conier.
I just, I just have one simple question. It might not even be fully related, but with all these, with all these big businesses grabbing, sizing up and new businesses coming in, we know, we all know why this is happening. The rail trail across the street. Is this at some point going to cause some traffic issues down the road that we might want to start thinking about? So Jill, in my opinion, the, the traffic on 28 compared, there may be some intersection issues that you have to think about. But in this segment of 28, I mean, don't forget, we just tore down, if you go down the road here with Boys, uh, Boysville, we just tore down four businesses. You know, in a floodplain down there. So my sense is, is that this is a well-defined access point. A, a lot, all these turning movements, except for the one out on and out in the main road take place at a single access point. You got good site distances. The speeds aren't that great, but you got good site distances through here. I'm not really concerned about segment volume on 28. It's, it's particular intersection volume. And, but we're not, we're not approaching that in any place that we, that we're aware of right now.
I have a comment about the, uh, traffic flow. Um, I go by there quite often and until I got used to the change that was made where they closed off the other entrance to the service road. Uh, it's really confusing to know where you actually turn in to get to Brett alone because it's so far from the building. You know, the, the normal thing would be to go in from the direction you're coming in, turn onto the service road and then keep going to the building. As it is now, you have to go way past the building and cut in and then make it like what feels like a U-turn to get up to Brett alone. But there's no signage that really explains that. And I was wondering what could be done to make it.
We could do an advisory comment, Vivian, and say that they should consider working with DOT or the town with respect to, uh, wayfinding signage at the entrance point.
Yes, I would, I would, I would like that.
Is the, the folks that made the motion, is that okay?
I amend the motion.
I still second it.
Okay.
We're good.
But this is Drew. I've got a couple of questions. Robert, are they proposing to do this in phases or are they going to do this all in one big shot?
I didn't see any phasing plan.
Okay. And the other question, and I don't know, I, I should know the answer, but I don't. This facility is on the wastewater treatment plant in Boysville. This looks like a significant, I'll say increase in their use. I don't know whether they need to get any permission from the wastewater treatment.
They've been working with DEP and, and the, and the sewer folks with respect to that. Um, and my understanding is the wastewater treatment plant is significantly underutilized.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure from a, that.
Right. There's only 2,000 square feet of expansion. I'm not sure. It might be mostly a dining space. I'm not sure how much. And a cooler, I believe.
Okay.
Is the building significantly larger than the existing one?
No.
No. Mostly outside stuff.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll have to admit, I, I knew this was coming along. I hadn't seen the site plan before, but for Town of Olive, I'm impressed with the quality of the work on this one.
Oh, my God, it's, it's-
I think we're impressed anywhere.
Not even for the town of Olive. It's just impressive.
Yes.
Yeah. Any other discussion?
Rob, just to curiosity, who's, who's the firm that's doing this?
Dutton Architecture.
Thank you.
He came into us, he came into us, uh, about two months ago and he submitted what they were proposing and we made several sets of comments back or just one set of comments back and I talked to Scott and I've been meeting Scott. We've, we've been talking back and forth about other projects and, um, and then he came back with this and I said, yeah, this is really good.
All right, any objections to the motion? And it's approved.
Hey, Rob, this is Drew. I got one, one comment. Uh, I'm pretty sure the planning board is hoping to approve this on the, their meeting on the nineteenth.
Okay, I already talked to their planning board chair a couple of days ago. He's where it was on our agenda.
Okay.
Okay, Town of Rochester. Any recusals?
Yeah, I should, uh, refuse on this one since the town owns the property that it's on.
So proposal for this actually, I, we kept it on the agenda, but technically our exception agreement covers these. So co-locations or amendments to towers that don't result in the footprint or the height of the tower actually exempt for referral. So this is more, here is a reminder that you don't need to refer these. So I mean, so this is the existing antenna array. This is the new one. No kind of impact.
Don't move.
Second.
I'll second that, Gio.
Okay. Any further discussion? Any objections to the motion? It's passed. Sawgarden Village.
All right, I'll get past and they can- Let me go to Ariel. Oh, there we are, Partition Street.
Cool.
Okay, so. Building that we're talking about is right here. They're gonna do a two-story addition right in the back of it. And they're also constructing a single-story building right over here, and that's gonna be an ice cream shop. Existing retail is gonna continue in the front. This is gonna be two, but two apartments, which may, which were mentioned as possible B and B or Airbnb. And it's part of the application. When we go to the PowerPoint. So, like I said, two-story addition apartment, one-story ice cream shop. They have enough parking, including for the residential. This is the site plan, as I mentioned. So you have the, uh, a two-story additions in the rear, so you won't see it from the road. Comment will be if you're gonna create something that's called alleyway ice cream. Probably have signage up front that says alleyway ice cream back here. So some sort of wayfinding signage would be appropriate. Don't have details on that. Uh, okay.
They got really good ice cream, by the way.
Goodness. Come on. Okay, that's what it's gonna, that's what the back, the addition looks like. And you're not gonna see it from the road. And that's what the ice cream shop is a, uh, similar design. That's what it looks like from the road right now. That's not the portion that's being changed. So just a comment about wayfinding signage. They should have lighting in that parking area, especially if they're open later. It does enjoy the municipal parking, so people will be able to, people may actually more see this from municipal parking lot than from, uh, on the way back to municipal parking lots and from Partition Street itself. Uh, apartment, just want to make an advisory comment about that and that they should really-
And they're building, they're building those apartments as short-term rentals, right, Rob?
It, that's what it appears to be. They even, they mentioned in the application that they're possible Airbnb. And we really urge the town that they should be kept as regular rental apartments, not use Airbnb, given the demand.
The town, the town should consider pretty soon a short-term rental statute and increase the, by the way, and, and we just filed our comments with respect to their comprehensive plan. It's one of the things that we mentioned in the comprehensive plan is they have a housing crisis and it includes the village. And if you're gonna build new units, they shouldn't turn them over to short-term rentals. They should make them apartments.
Rob, can we add a required mod that if they're short-term rentals that they must register with the county?
Yeah, we, we would, we would make that as part of the comment, yes.
Yeah, but I, I think that should be required, not advisory. Because that's, that's part of the, the county statute.
Don't they have to do it now? So, Mike, the reason it's an advisory comment is, is it's submitted, there's nothing in the books now that would prevent them from uh, building. Well, I think you're right, Mike. Let's, let's do that.
I'm saying, if they, if they choose to go with short-term rentals, that they have to register with the County Department of Finance if they go with short-term rentals. If they don't, then it doesn't matter. They don't have to register, but the, the registration is required if you're running a short-term rental under the motel and bed tax.
How many, how many, well, okay, we're fine. That's, that's fine. Well, I got it, Mike. We're good.
I'm not talking about it from a land use or a housing standpoint.
I got it.
I'm talking about it from a finance standpoint.
I, I have a-
I agree with Mike Madden.
I have a question. Um, if people are gonna be walking up that drive-through area, uh, get to the ice cream place, or if they're parking across where the parking is and crossing over to get to that, is there some kind of a speed bump or some kind of thing to alert, uh,
Pedestrian safety works, Cindy? I like that idea. That's really good.
Yeah, some sort of signage should be, or speed bump, something that's traffic calming. Sure.
What's the width of that alley?
Doesn't stay on the plan.
Rob, is that plan cut off or am I not seeing the whole plan? Am I just, I never mind.
That's the whole parcel. If you're seeing it.
Doesn't that parking lot exit to a street to the right-hand side?
Hang on, let me get back to there.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna, that's what I was getting at, I think.
It did show the whole parcel, but it does connect to, um,
Where, where's the parcel, Rob?
Little parking. That's the parcel, the blue line is.
How do you get to it now?
You have to go through in between where Maribel's is and, um, oh, God, that other place there. Now, there's a little roadway through there.
There's a driveway here. There is no sidewalk. And then you, I imagine there, there is a path that you can walk through there. So there is already pedestrian movement, I believe, probably walking through the site.
And they could get to the, they could get to the ice cream place from, from Main Street, right, Rob?
Yes, well, from Partition.
From, see, that's what I meant, from Partition Street. So they can go down. They can go down this way, Rob, and get the ice cream square that way?
Yeah, that, that would be the way they would do it. That's where I was mentioning the wayfinding time.
Gotcha. I'm following you now. I was confused.
So the access to the parking area that's there for the current business and apartment is identified, but how do you get to it?
It's right through here.
This is the driveway right through there.
Through the alley. Can't get in this way, Rob?
Which way? Yeah, you can also walk in that way from the, uh, the municipal lot as well.
Can't drive in that way?
No, I don't believe so.
No. Rob, if you're driving in the, along the blue line, aren't the parking-
God, goodness, I just said the same thing.
The wrong angle.
I can't, there's something going on. It can't be right here.
They must be turning around to do it, but, uh, yeah. I can't do many-
Cross Edmond.
With the, uh, with the municipal lot?
Yeah, it's, it's that municipal parking area.
Yeah, I'm, I'm following it, I think.
It would sure make some sense.
You go into it now off of Partition Street and then, um, uh, exit Buffalo Russell Street.
That way, the driveway could only be, uh,
Oh, it's a one-way driveway, Vince?
Yes.
That's kind of what I thought, Vince.
What? Wait a minute. I, I got it. What?
Yeah, let's work this out, Rob, just to make those-
Otherwise, those lines are going the wrong direction.
Let's zoom in on this a little bit more here. Uh, was my satellite. Yeah. Am I in the right spot? Now I am. Okay. That's as far as I can get. There's a lot of tree coverage.
You go in off of here, off of Partition where Maribel's is now.
Right.
Onto Russell Street.
Yeah, Rob, I think if you're gonna park in those spots, you come from the other direction.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
I don't see the, I mean, I don't see the, oh, actually.
There you go.
There you go. Let's see. I don't see access to that lot. This is a different road. How do you get into there? There's no, there's no access into there.
No, down for, off of Partition Street.
Oh, that's right. Well, actually, this is the, uh, parcel is actually back here.
Yeah.
Uh, is that a road? I can't get back there. But, uh, huh. Oh, look at that. I think there is that. Is that fenced off? I can't tell. Looks like there might be a path. I don't know if that's vehicular access, but it looks like there's a path of some sort there.
Well, in the picture where it shows cars in the parking, they're parked with the lines going that way.
Yeah. It, it's hard to tell without-
Let's do this.
Without going to site visit on that.
We'll, we'll actually go up and look at the site and/or work it out so that if there's a problem with the parking and access, we'll make that comment. We'll add that comment to it. How's that?
Great.
Sounds good.
I'm going to drive my-
Motion to support staff, Watkins.
Second it, McLaughlin.
Yeah, Rob, in that picture, if you look to the left, it sure looks like there's car access coming from the left.
Yeah, it, it might be.
I think it's just tree canopy cover is blocking it.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll check it out. We'll make sure. We won't just, we won't guess at it.
Nope.
Apples, right?
Rob likes to drive around.
I already gotta go to Marlboro tomorrow. I don't know.
I got a motion in a second.
Any, any discussion? Any objections?
These advisory comments, Rob?
Hang on, let me get back to it.
Actually, there was some required.
Required, that's what I thought.
I got signage and lighting and then we have the apartment comments and now we'll just-
And the pedestrian.
Yep, we're good. All right. I had a motion a second. We're good.
Okay. Um, now, Dennis, in the, just to, like, you know, in the Q and A section on this Spark Coffee.
Yeah, refusal from, um, Chris.
On the Spark Coffee one, there, there was a comment made that one of the photos that we were looking at was Photoshop.
Okay.
About the building that's so close to the shed.
Okay.
I believe that they have been, uh, referring to the, the picture with the sign.
Yeah, the, the sign was photoshopped in.
Yeah, the sign was, does not exist.
Yeah, that, that sign is photoshopped in.
Just making sure.
It just, we, I don't know what the location of that sign is actually is.
So I want to go back to the motion, Jer. We got a motion on the floor. We got, um, we don't have a, we don't have a vote yet.
Yeah, we did.
On Sawgarden Village? I didn't hear the vote.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, we're, no objections.
Okay, I missed it. Thank you.
No problem. No problem. Um, now we're in the town of Ulster.
Oh.
Accusals.
Yeah, I'm Chris.
Finally.
All right, Town of Ulster, thirty-six Sawkill Avenue. So this is the, uh, parcel here. This is all in the five-hundred-year floodplain. Not, it's surrounded by a hundred-year floodplain, but this poor parcel is not. And access to it is from Barbarossa Lane off of Sawkill. And the parcel, the project is located right in there. And it's an eight-thousand-square-foot warehouse that does not have a tenant yet. There's gonna be a solar array on the roof. One acre disturbed. That's a little uh, more macro-scale shot of the, the proposal. This is gonna flip it on its side a little bit, but it's small landscape. It has pedestrian access to crossing to the adjacent Kingston Hospital parcels. Um, let's see, got solar, like I said. It's actually for a warehouse, pretty well designed with, uh, ramps in the, uh, pitch roof line.
Loading docks are present.
Loading docks, lighting is good, signage is good.
They showed, uh, they showed truck traffic turning radiuses?
Yeah.
Yeah, they do. It's right on the site plan here.
Okay, I see it.
So.
So the only, yeah, go ahead, Rob.
Their comments are, uh, got dinged on the, uh, shipo for potentially being archaeological census. They might have to do a cultural resource analysis. They should also do an endangered species analysis as well while they're at it. Uh, wastewater. So let me go back to the big site plan. You see the red line on the site plan? That is for a proposed sewer line. Right now, the applicant, that does not exist. Thanks, then. That does not exist. Right now, the applicant is proposing septic, so if they're gonna go septic, they need to show that on the site plan. And if they're going to at some point do the, uh, sanitary line, it's, it's well out here, just so you know. Uh, they're gonna have to, they'll have to show, they'll have to have GPW approval for the line associated with Sawkill Road if they do that.
We don't have, we don't have any idea how they're gonna get to the sewer line, which, where I think that is is out on Wa- Washington Avenue. I don't think there's a sewer district out here, except on Washington Avenue. And that goes back to the city.
Right, so it's not part of anything right now.
So they'd have to get, they'd have to get, they'd have to get under Chandler Drive or, or over it, one of the two, which, and under, and under or around the county's Sawkill Road. So there's multiple other approvals that would need it if they're gonna go to a sewer, if they're gonna go to a sewer line. I know it's a forced main. It's not that big and it's not that hard to do, but we're gonna need a number of approvals in order to do that.
Right.
The last thing, Rob, if you go back to your, leave, go back to your, uh, your site plan, your big site plan.
This one?
Yeah, so the thing that we're concerned about here is we want to make sure that the remainder of this parcel that exists, if you go to the zone, if you go to the, you see where the road ends? The road ends right about here. And so the, the thing that we're trying to think about is how do we get back to this other area where, which opens up this whole big parcel to the, you know, go back to the other site plan. See this big parcel in here?
Yeah.
See, see if I can annotate that, excuse me.
Oh, there.
All this parcel all in here. Yeah, that's it, Rob. So what we're trying to do is make sure that, um, that the road here will extend through, so this parcel opens up. Because we really don't want to have access, except perhaps right in out access off of Sawkill Road, because you're coming down over that off the bridge down through here. We want to try to make all access come out about Barbarossa Lane. So we want to make, we want to make that comment back to the local planning board to say that they should start to think about what happens to the rest of this par, rest of this parcel here. And if we build up enough traffic on Barbarossa Lane, we may be able to signalize that.
Right. It may not also be a bad idea, um, if, that, you create that, go straight to that Rayban road back there and-
Yeah, that's a floodplain back in here. It goes into the floodplain back in here, but the point being is, is is that these parcels should be, should be thinking about limited access to Sawkill Road and trying to direct particularly truck traffic and everything else back through here. We don't want to close, we don't want to close off that opportunity.
Would that be required mod, Dennis?
I think so, yeah.
It makes sense.
You know, is the septic area they're proposing on their, on their property?
We don't know, it's not shown. They show a sewer line, but, but, but they indicate that they may go septic if they can't get the sewer work done. To be honest with you, for a warehouse, I don't know why they would wanna put a sewer line in. I mean, it's, it's not, there's not a lot of workers in a warehouse.
No, it's that future project coming on that big lot.
That could be it.
Yep.
Is that parking on the big lot, not on the...
They have some spots where they have reserve areas for future parking that's outside, that's on the perimeter of the property.
And we should make that comment as well, that they need to control that if they're gonna show it.
Let me zoom in a bit. Yeah, it says future park, whoop, sorry, future parking area.
Cause that would have to be taken in, uh...
Yeah, good, good point.
For stormwater.
Well, not, not now, but it would have to be taken in. They need to control it if they're gonna show it.
Right.
Exactly.
All right, so we have those comments.
Hey, Rob?
Yeah.
Do they own that big parcel?
Well, this goes back to if they own it now, they may not own it later. You know, they may sell off this 8,000-square-foot warehouse, we don't know.
That would have to be some sort of easement, uh, a permanent easement or something, so that they could use that at some future time.
Yeah, they, they need to take it into account, I, you're right, there's, there's a lot of ways to do it, they can move the lot line, they could, you know...
Right.
But they need to take it into account.
Current ownership is, you have that and that, so you, you already have a couple of different owners in here. All right, any other comments?
So, you, so you're adding the other comments that Dennis said, right?
Yeah, yeah. We got part required modification, and they're all required modifications.
I'll make that motion, Mike Baden.
Okay, a second.
Go ahead, Gio, you can do it.
No, no, you can do it.
Conyer, you got it, Mr. Conyer. I kept waiting for you.
Okay, any further discussion? Any objections to the, to the motion? Okay. Next.
All right, last one at least. Back to Ulster Albany 7 LLC reviewed this for the, uh, site plan the other month. Yeah, and at that time, we knew there was gonna be an area variance and use variance associated with it, but the use variance put the multifamily in the, uh, HD zoning district. There's actually a new variance, because DOT has looked at the project and required that they move, I'll show you on the, uh, let me go to the site plan for you. So, if you recall, that's the proposal, that they're going to removing this building here and putting in a laundromat mixed use with, uh, nine apartments on top of it. And that building here is going to be reused for, uh, Jane's Ice Cream. Manufacturing, not retail sales. So, this is the, uh, site plan we saw previously. And this is amendment one, so they, they actually responded to a lot of comments. Remember, we're reviewing this for area variance and use variance, so there's a front yard variance. There's another use variance now, and I'll show you, so they had them remove three spaces right there. And, so that's not an issue for us, and they're also having them move probably easier if I go back and forth for you.
No, you can see the outline, Rob, you can see the outline.
Okay, yeah, they're moving the island, yeah, you can see from the outline, they moved the island, put 30, uh, defined the curb cut a little bit more and removed those, uh, parking spaces. So, we have no problem with that. They did respond to our comment, they extended the sidewalk right to the sidewalk system for the town. Uh, see, they put in some more landscaping around the perimeter. They did that, our comment, and also they, um, this, we had a comment about this. View from the road, and they did that, they put some more windows in and signage and boosted up a little bit.
Looks nice.
So, but, our, so this is area variance and use variance though, so, area variance for parking and for the front yard variance, there's no county impact on those. The use variance is where we were concerned, where the difficulty they might have in making the hardship test, that they have to provide the evidence, I don't have any documentation from the applicant that states how they're going to make the use variance test. Now, I know they have had the property on the market for all, and they haven't been able to do anything with it, so they'll have to provide that to the board, see if they can meet the, meet that test. If not, and we highly recommend that they, town really reconsider looking at their zoning, given the demand of multifamily per, per housing in the county and the town. That they really look at this district and the districts adjacent to it, consider, uh, doing an overlay zone or, or allowing multifamily by, uh, special...
An overlay zone that would allow, that would allow apartments on second floors would be great.
Right. This one does have a one-first-floor apartment too.
Yeah, so, once you allow on the second floor, you can area variance into the first.
Right.
So, that's the recommendations, folks.
Don't move, our motion to support staff.
I'll second it, Conyer.
Who was the first?
Uh, Vince McLaughlin.
Okay, that's... And Frank, are you still recused on this?
Yep.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, any further discussion? Any objections to the motion?
Yeah, I'm still opposed to this project.
Okay.
So, you're opposed to the, do you oppose to the use variance or the area variance, or both of them, Gio?
Man...
Both of them, I was opposed last time I was here, I'm opposed again on all counts.
Can I ask, uh, if you would like to give your reasons so that we could, um, think about the things that bother you?
I just think that's too dense of a site, it's too close to residential areas behind it and to the left of it. And i-it's just too congested, and I, I, it's not a good fit, and we don't even know what kind of manufacturing they're gonna be doing back there.
That's the ice cream.
Last time, we didn't know what kind of manufacturing was going on back there.
Okay.
Does that make a difference to you, Gio? That it's ice cream?
It, it doesn't make a difference, I, I think it's too dense of a site, it's too tight. Uh, there's too much residential space adjoining it, and it, it just doesn't need to be there.
So, you would not be in favor of rezoning for more apartments at that, at that spot?
No.
Would you, are you opposed to having a laundromat there?
I don't, I also do not particularly like having, uh, residential right on Albany Avenue, there, there's a lot of fast-moving traffic there, it's, I, I said it last time, I don't think it's a very safe situation for, uh, for apartments. I, I know that we need more housing in Ulster County, I get it. I, there's plenty of land, not there. Didn't we have a problem with the truck turning radius behind the building?
They, I think they, they, we, we, we sort of changed that, but, and it's, that's the answer, anyway, Mark, we're on a use variance and an area variance.
Right.
I'm not trying to hold this up, I'm just a one, I'm just opposed, so that's it, just move on, you know?
I do appreciate hearing the arguments against, I, it does make a difference to me, even though I, I probably going to not change my vote, but I, I do appreciate hearing it.
I don't know, I, that, that's my reasoning, I just don't like, there's too much going on there, it's too congested, I've grown up here all my life, so, I kinda get it.
Right, that's why I wanna hear what, what your opinion is, it, it is important.
That's fine. Do we know how big the apartments are?
They all look to be one-bedroom.
I have to go back to the site plan review to, uh, beside the floor plan as well with it.
The only reason I'm asking is that people, do they have a place to go? If it's a one-bedroom, it's not a big deal, but if it's two bedrooms or more, then it, it could be an issue, I, you know?
It's no more than two, but, and I, I think it's mostly one-bedroom, and I don't think, at most, there's a two-bedroom.
Oh, one-bedroom.
Okay, okay, thank you. But Gino does bring up good points, so, I'm not gonna change my vote.
Okay, so at this point, we have, um, we're done, opposed, one recusal, and everyone else supported.
Um...
Jerry, can I, I won't know also, Victor.
Okay, so we have two opposed.
We still have a quorum, we still have the people?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay.
All right, so we still have a quorum on the vote, so the motion still passes. Thank you, everyone.
That's all, folks.
Motion to adjourn, folks. Second, Conyer.
Well...
Well, I can't make the motion.
We just went backwards.
I'll make the motion, Vivian.
Thank you, Vivian.
Thank you, Vivian.
Dennis, I, I forwarded the email, but I sent to the Transportation Council to your e-mail as well.
Thanks, yeah, well, I'll give you a call tomorrow.
Okay. If, if you need...